It's 6:32 and I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, for the members of the board, there are four amendments we'd like to recommend. We'd like to recommend that you add item four under new business, a first read of amended policy JJIA, high school co-curricular programs. Item number five, first read of amended policy JJIB, grades five through eight co-curricular activities. First read of policy IKF for item number six, which is graduation requirements. And item seven would be discussion and consideration of a school bus lease purchase, for which we received four bids and have a little bid to recommend to you.
I make a motion to amend the agenda by adding the following to J new business as recommended by the superintendent: first read of amended policy JJIA, first read of amended policy JJIB, first read of policy IKF, and discussion and consideration of school bus lease purchase.
I second that.
And discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Item D, approval of minutes for June 14, 2016.
I move that we approve the minutes of the June 14, 2016 board meeting as presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Item E, communications and correspondence.
I believe all the correspondence that we received this month would be included in your packet. There were some letters of resignation. I'll address those in my report.
Item F, public participation. Item G, administrative board reports.
As members can see, we have a number of administrators who are not here this evening. Excused are Mr. Clifford, Mrs. Ramos, and Mrs. Bowles. And you should have their written reports.
Mr. Newitt.
For school news, I'd like to report that we more than exceeded our goal this year of 3,000 parent contacts. With May and June added into our previous total, we ended up with 5,466 parent contacts for the year. So we were very, very pleased that the teachers took that on and made the effort to email, call, stop in the grocery store, whatever it was, to make sure that parents were informed about what was going on with their children. We currently are having summer school going on at the school. We have both a Title I summer school and a special education summer school. Kent McLaughlin is doing the math for us. Rebecca Maddox-Wilber is teaching the ELA. And we have that eighth grade wing is kind of their area where they meet. And Sheila Gallagher and Val McCluskey are sharing the special ed duty. So it's great really to have kids back in the building again. We do still have several vacancies for teaching positions. We've done several interviews and have good prospects. Special ed life skills is one we still are looking for. We have forward a name for special ed grades six through eight to Mr. Higgins, as well as for the health and PE. So a couple of those are about ready to be wrapped up. And we still have a couple of ed tech vacancies. The same is true in our co-curricular areas. There are vacancies for boys JV soccer head cross-country coach. In the wintertime, we need a boys varsity basketball coach. And in the spring, we need a head track coach. But we did fill our fall drama club, spring drama club, and show choir today officially with Jasmine Ireland is going to take that on. So that'll be to have that one person kind of overseeing all three programs will make for some good consistency, I think. And obviously, it dovetails well with the high school. And in parent news, homeroom lists have been posted on the front door since last Friday. Our first day of school next year is Thursday, September 1. Our open house is Tuesday, September 6. And that's it. Nice late month. The summer, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Ms. Peterson-Roper.
Evening, everybody.
Hi.
I'd like to start with saying that the cleaning of the school has been amazing. And they did a different schedule this year where all of the custodians went to one school and then to another. I know HCTC was the first to be cleaned, and that is in history, done in a week. And they're doing crazy wonderful things at EEMS. I'd like to publicly say thank you to them because they're working hard, particularly, I know, this week as it gets pretty hot. Our elementary playground is closed, continues to be closed. We're doing routine maintenance on that. We're going to be laying down more pads. And our ground cloth has come up through the woodchips. So it's not a safe place to be, so it's locked up. And we ask folks not to climb the fence to come on in. That we have a beautiful playground at the Milton Park. We've too have just begun to interview for positions. We still have two educational technicians available. We have a K-4 resource room, teaching position, and possibly a second grade position. I'm hopeful that we'll fill those all well. Since school has finished, we've had some children who have withdrawn to go to different schools. And we've had a lot of kids come in. Today, we had four register, and so our numbers continue to climb. At our next meeting, I'll have a number for you. But particularly, our kindergarten seems to be holding at around 15 or 16 a class. So I am very thankful that we have six there. We've been hosting, as Jim said, summer school. And so our special education provides ESY. And this year, Rachel worked really hard to get our Title I to take the place of a YSPAR and working with the YMCA, and it's been great. I'd like to thank all the following teachers for working through the summer because it's never an easy thing to do. Sarah Brown, Bobby Palmer, Chelsea Salisbury, Darcy Dyer, Megan Pelletier, Laura Dyer, Rachel Hayden Turner, I'm sorry, Rachel Turner Hayden, Laura Kobe, Mary Carter, Deb Jordan, Kim Berry, and Bren Norwood. So we have a lot of staff who stepped up. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Annie?
I just handed out the CNA certificate ceremony program. We had our ceremony last night, and we had 10 people graduate. And eight of them already have jobs, so we're pretty excited about that. And our next CNA program is starting the first week in September. And thanks to the work that we did in our patient care, integrated education and training project, it will be kind of like a CNA plus. We're going to be incorporating a lot of job readiness skills, as well as computer basics into that program. So people who take advantage of that program will really be ready for the 21st century patient care world. So we hope people will contact us. We have openings in that program. And again, just contact us either on the website or call us. The big news that we have is, and I wasn't at the last board meeting, I apologize, but we moved. I don't know if you all are aware of that. But we didn't move very far. But we're now located, co-located with the University of Maine Center. And it's going to be wonderful. We're still sort of transitioning, but it's already been a really positive thing to have some students in and around where other people are taking college classes. So we're really excited about the potential. So definitely stay tuned to new developments in terms of collaboration. Our graduation was a real success. I had so many comments from all the graduates and also people who attended. We had a record turnout. Not so hard to have a record turnout when we're only in our second year. Is that true? It's only been two years? It's amazing. But it really was amazing. And I think I'm going totally out of order in my report. But the big news that we had, every story, one of the things that we have a ritual of doing is reading a little bio for each of the students. And I included them in the report. I'm not going to read all of them. But I thought it might be good just to read a couple of them. Brandon just had his 10th anniversary at EBS, a father of Carter, Braden, and Drake. One of them was born while he was taking his ISET tests. He's missing his mother tonight, who always wanted to see him graduate. She inspired him to take this step. It took him 10 years, but boy, is he glad he did it. His experience with adult education taught him that when you go to school for 12 years and you think the learning won't stick with you, it does, even 10 years later. He appreciated how informational the teachers were, the one-to-one attention, and learning at his own pace. He remarked that the teachers respect the students' learning capacities. Then another one here. Chris was inspired to earn his high school credential by his daughter, who left school this winter and wasn't convinced that going to adult education was the right thing to do. It turns out she was his inspiration. He reported that being involved in the adult ed program has been wonderful. The staff worked around his extremely variable schedule. He worked as a tow truck operator. He especially liked to thank his daughter Carly and the staff at Ellsworth Adult Ed. He just got a full-time job at Seaport Village Healthcare Facility with a regular income and benefits. And here's another one. James is a young man who has faced many challenges in his young life. He is known to many as Shorty, but I think it should be Smiley. Whatever James faces, he does it with a smile. His adult education path has been a long one, interrupted by many challenges he's faced. In fact, ever since he started seven years ago, tonight's a night of genuine joy for all of us. We honor James for persevering in the face of adversity. This is somebody who just left Ellsworth High School, so I wanted to share this one. Brianna, two months ago, she thought she'd never be graduating because of health issues. It's incredible for her to overcome the issues and be on the stage tonight, a high school graduate. So she's writing this piece. She says her experience was wonderful, and she definitely glad she chose to come to adult ed. She didn't think she'd ever graduate but for adult ed. So these are just a handful of the stories. And it's pretty inspiring. It's inspiring for me, and I've been doing this for 30 years. But every single person I meet through adult ed, I'm always amazed at their resilience. So I wanted to just share a couple of those. I don't know if people have seen the spot that was done on that. We had three generations graduating one night. And that was an extraordinary experience, I know, for me. And there was not, I don't think there was a dry eye in that graduation. But WABI picked that story up. And not only that, but CNN picked it up. And so it went national. And I was just called yesterday, and they're going to be doing, those three are going to be doing a special project with the Maine Department of Education promoting adult ed. So it's kind of exciting. I think that's it. There are a couple other things in here, but I think that's pretty much it. We're setting up our classes for the fall, eager to get ideas for courses and so on. So if anybody has any ideas, please contact me. Any questions? Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Annie. Mr. Higgins?
Yes, members of the board, members of the audience, members of the viewing public. At last month's meeting, I told you that I was hoping to come back and report that the bleachers had been removed from the track, and I'm able to do that this evening. They've been gone for just over a week. And materials have been delivered to the scrapyard in Holden. And representatives from Vermont Tennis Courts will be on site Friday morning to conduct assessment of the damage to the surface and prepare an estimate of the repair of those repair costs. Excuse me. As I said, we still have only two bids for replacement bleachers. And we're working with our insurer and reviewing those plans. And we'll hopefully have a set selected and installed by the beginning of the fall sports season. So that's very good news. I'd also like to report briefly on development of the strategic plan that's under development. As we've talked about at previous meetings, the strategic plan is going to evolve from the vision and mission. During a two-day workshop that members of the leadership team had this past week, the leadership team conducted a review of the vision and mission statements, specifically focusing on each individual component of the statements and identifying evidence of success in meeting vision and mission for each statement, components in which we're making progress towards meeting the mission and vision, and components in which we need to continue our work or maybe place a little more emphasis. As we know, the vision and mission are the creation of a wide cross-section of stakeholders of the Ellsworth School Department and reflect the greater community's values and beliefs about education. The work of the leadership team is a precursor to the work that will be done early this fall by a larger committee in developing a strategic plan for the school system. So it's a very positive development. At last month's meeting, the board approved the professional, excuse me, the performance evaluation, professional growth plans that were put together by the steering committee. And I'm pleased to report this evening that we've received, and I'll pass the letter along, we've received formal approval of both of those plans from the Department of Education. So what I would like to do, go back a step. Along with the approval, there were a couple of recommendations for consideration. One was for the committee to consider increasing the percentage for which student achievement data counts towards the overall rating. And in a conversation I had with the individual who sent me the letter, he indicated that that was a figure that was arrived at through a lot of collaborative work between administration and the teachers. And we were really comfortable with that level starting out. And they were comfortable with that. But I would like to recognize the efforts of members of the steering committee, which were Rebecca Wright, Julie Hammer, Lori Johnston, Rochelle Brown, Sheila Gallagher, all teachers, Amy Peterson-Roper, Jim Newitt, and Dan Clifford as administrators, and all of the teachers and administrators who participated in the pilot of the teacher system this past school year. Both of those documents are very good products. And we believe they're going to really have a positive emphasis on teaching and learning in the Ellsworth School Department. Positive news, even though we just ended a school year, the Pack the Backpack promotion that happened for the first time last August is scheduled to be held again on Saturday, July 30, 2016, from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 o'clock. It'll be held in front of TJ Maxx at the Main Coast Mall. The event is being held in an effort to collect supplies for students for the 1617 school year, which starts on September 1, if anybody was wondering. As the title of the promotion suggests, we're looking for all manner of school supplies and backpacks in which the supplies may be packed. For those who are unable to make a donation on the 30th, this year's underwriter, which is the First National Bank in Ellsworth, will be setting up a donation receptacle at their Ellsworth location beginning tomorrow. We appreciate the generosity of all those who contributed during last year's inaugural event and encourage any and all to support our students for the coming year. On behalf of the school department and our students, I'd like to express appreciation to Star 97.7 FM, The First, and TJ Maxx for hosting the event, and to all people who will contribute. I've included in my report a list of the teacher nominations, which we'll take up in a little bit later on the agenda. And we'd like to announce a couple of new hires. Mr. Newitt mentioned one, the drama program at EMS. We'd like to mention an ed tech at EMS, ed tech three, Jacob Hackett will be joining us. Helen Cochran, a familiar name, who served in a one-to-one ed tech role at the high school last year, will be returning at EMS next year as an ed tech three. And as we just confirmed this afternoon, we have a new varsity soccer coach at Ellsworth High School. Paul Locke will be the new soccer coach at Ellsworth High School.
Are you happy to be rid of him, Jim?
No, I won't.
Well, I don't think Jim's happy. Jim is now going to be looking for a varsity soccer coach at the middle school. We do have some letters of resignation, retirement. I told you I'd take those up. Resigning this year, moving on. Patricia April, special education teacher at EMS. Joe Capehart, special education teacher at EMS. Anthony Jones, physical education, health education, middle school and high school. Sean McPhee, social studies at the high school. And Diane Terry, special education at EMS. And that concludes my report unless you have questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item H, committee reports.
The policy committee met yesterday, and we reviewed three policies. Grades five through eight, co-curricular activities, high school co-curricular programs, and Ellsworth School Department graduation requirements. They were pretty straightforward. There were a few things that Dan has taken back to the leadership team for consideration of. And those are highlighted on the policies. But other than that, Dan, Paul, anything you want to add? I'm, no, we were ready to bring them forward for a first read.
Okay.
You felt confident?
Thank you. Old business? Says none. New business? Staff presentation?
Staff presentation. I had expected we were going to have our food corps representative.
Yeah, she told me she was coming. So she told me she was running a little bit late, but she should be walking in the door in a second now, I think.
Well, I think if the board is comfortable with that, we can move on with the remainder of the agenda.
Yeah.
And when she shows up, she can do her presentation.
Okay. Discussion and consideration of authorizing superintendent to act on behalf of the school board in appointing teaching staff in the month of July and August.
And the explanation for this item is, as you see, we have seven teachers this evening who are asking for nomination and confirmation. And we still have a number of positions to fill. At this time of year, a number of things make that a challenge. Many people are looking at positions in more than one school system and maybe looking at taking the first best offer that comes along. The other piece would be certification. In some cases, we're people who are still waiting to hear from the Department of Education. So once we hear that they have certification or are eligible for certification, it behooves us to be able to offer a position to top candidates. So we're asking for your consideration and authorizing me to act on your behalf in appointing teaching staff with the understanding that at a subsequent meeting, we'll come back and do a board formal confirmation of that action.
I make a motion to authorize the superintendent to act on behalf of the school board in appointing teaching staff in the month of July and August.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Item J, three, consideration of teacher nominations.
As I said, we have seven for you this evening. I think at your last meeting, you ought to take them individually. Some of the nominees are able to be with us this evening. Some of them are not able to be with us. How would the board like to proceed? Individual?
Individual, probably.
Well, first on the list, we'd like to introduce Lindsey Bailey, who is being nominated for high school English, and Lindsey is with us this evening. Lindsey comes to EHS with a wealth of knowledge of English and teaching experience at the high school and college level. She received her Bachelor of Arts degree at Dickinson College in Pennsylvania, majoring in English, Russian, Language and Literature, and her Master's of Science degree in Secondary Education from the University of Scranton, and 31 credits towards her CAS in Comparative Literature from the University of Colorado. She taught at the Delaware Valley High School, Marywood University, and Santa Barbara Business College in California. Search Committee was impressed with her knowledge of English and education as a whole, her ability to form relationships with high school and college students, and her enthusiasm to teach at Ellsworth High School. So we'd be nominating her for a first-year probationary contract for the 201617 school year.
So we're doing these motions.
Individually, or?
Yeah. I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of Lindsey Bailey to a first-year probationary contract for the 20162017 school year.
I'll second that. Discussion? All those in favor?
Also with us this evening, we have Douglas Flag, who is being nominated as our carpentry instructor halftime at HCTC. Doug brings with him 18 years of successful experience in residential construction, boat building, cabinet making, and woodworking to the carpentry position at HCTC. He has also had successful experience working in the printing and graphics industry and is a small business owner in the food industry for, I believe, eight years. Committee was impressed with his varied related employment experiences, which include all the things I talked about, but also training and orienting new staff, which fits very nicely with what he's going to be doing at HCTC. His references are very strong, and he will be a very strong fit with the program and the staff at HCTC. So we're nominating Doug for a first-year probationary contract at HCTC for the 1617 school year.
I make a motion that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of Douglas Flag to HCTC carpentry position for the contract of the 201617 school year.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
And we have one more nominee who's here tonight, Sarah Petulis. And Sarah will be coming to HCTC with a solid background in the biomedical research field, primarily with the Jackson Laboratory, with whom we have an agreement moving forward to this program. She has a bachelor's in animal and veterinary science and a master's in science education. Committee was impressed with her background and experience working as a research assistant and as a project manager with Jackson Lab, and that within those roles, had many opportunities to train and mentor staff and visiting students. As we've talked about with Doug, references are very solid. And Sarah will be a good fit with the program and the staff in the school department. So nominate her to you for a first-year probationary contract, 1617 school year.
I move that we confirm the superintendent's nomination of Sarah Petulis for a first-year probationary contract for the 20162017 school year.
I second that. Discussion? All those in favor?
And we have four more, and unfortunately, you want to do those after?
Or we can do them all.
Do those all together?
All together.
What I will do is go through and give you the bio for each of them, and then you can take them all as one. Ellsworth High School Music would nominate Jamie Calandro. Jamie comes to Ellsworth High School with a variety of teaching experience and a gift for teaching music. He graduated from Maris College with a Bachelor of Arts degree with a minor in music. Jamie has taught at Mercy High School since 2003 as their music teacher, department chair, director of school musicals, director of fine arts, film studies teacher, journalism, public speaking teacher, physical education teacher, and some extracurricular athletic activities. He also took a music program that had very small numbers at that high school and created a very strong performing program. Committee is excited about his enthusiasm and commitment to Ellsworth High School, being part of the overall community, love of music, and the hard work he put into the fine arts program at his previous school. Also being nominated this evening, social studies at Ellsworth High School, Judson Raven. Judson will bring with him 19 years of successful classroom teaching experience in Maine and North Carolina to the social studies position at Ellsworth High School. Received his BA in history with a minor in German from the University of Maine. Furthered his education through various seminars, conferences, and summer institutes through the University of Southern Maine. And this past year, with a five-month-long cross-country road trip with his family to learn and experience the history, culture, and geography of the United States, part of with the belief that experiencing the history and culture and geography of the United States will be an asset to his teaching. Committee was impressed with his knowledge and background in the content area and enthusiasm for teaching, particularly in the social studies curriculum. Again, references are very strong, and he will be a very good fit for Ellsworth High School and the social studies department. HCTC early childhood education instructor, Megan Stubbs. Megan will come to HCTC with a Bachelor of Arts in Early Childhood Education and Child and Family Studies from Leslie University. And varied employment experiences working with preschool and early elementary children in preschools, public schools, and at an area YMCA. She also has experience working with students identified with special needs. Committee was impressed with her related work experience and background working with preschool-aged children in her conference and her interview. And again, references are solid, and the committee feels she'd be a good fit with the staff at HCTC. And finally, this evening, special education at Ellsworth High School, Stephanie McGruder. Stephanie will be coming to Ellsworth High School from Chesterland, Ohio, who has a master's degree in education and is certified as a special ed teacher and an English teacher, grade seven through 12, with 12 years of teaching experience at the high school level. Her experiences include working in a program that serves students with significant, excuse me, significant emotional and behavioral needs. She worked at an organization called the Auburn Career Center, which is similar to Hancock County Technical Center in Ohio, as a special education teacher and job coach. And she worked at Bedford High School in Bedford, Ohio, as an English teacher. The interview committee felt that Stephanie would bring with her a strong knowledge and understanding of special ed, and were impressed with her passion and commitment to serve students who are in need of help. to serve students who require special education. So I'd like to nominate those four teachers to the board for first-year probationary contracts for the 1617 school year.
I make a motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of Jamie Calandro, Stephanie McGruder, Judson Raven, and Megan Stubbs to a first-year probationary contract for the 2016-17 school year.
May I second that?
Discussion? All those in favor? Do we have to go backwards right now?
Yeah, I think presenter is here. So if the board would like, we can go back to that item. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ally.
You're welcome.
All right, hi. Again, my name is Ally Mediate, and I was a Food Corps service member this year, this past year, 2015, 2016, in the Ellsworth School District. Just as a review for the Food Corps role here, I just wanted to mention or bring attention to the three pillars that Food Corps stands for, or their service stands for. We first have knowledge. So service members are dedicated to teaching garden-based cooking and nutrition lessons in schools and to integrate healthy food education across curricula. They're also interested in engagement. So service members get kids, parents, teachers, administrators, and community members into the garden, and they work to support and enhance existing gardens and to start new ones. And then the third one is access. Service members increase student contact with and, oh, with and their access to fresh, healthy local foods by working with food service staff to make procurement changes, recipe or ingredient alterations, implement taste tests, and support a healthy cafeteria culture. And then the fourth pillar, which is new this year, they're interested in creating a sustainable community culture. So the school community, basically, they're interested in creating staying power in schools. This means when Food Corps presence is no longer in the Ellsworth School District, there's a sustained sense of a healthy food environment. So this goes beyond just having food in the environment accessible, but really creating a sustainable culture for the school, where healthy food is very easily accessible and also normative. Okay, so we had a very busy year this year. Shake off my little nervousness. I know you guys, I don't know why I'm shaking here. Okay, so in the Ellsworth Elementary Middle School this year, we had a very productive year. The school garden team was comprised of teachers, librarians, parents, and community members, and they met on a monthly basis throughout the entire 2015-16 school year. The school team is strong and will continue to meet monthly next year. The team solidified its mission and vision, created a promotional brochure, which you all saw last time we were in. And we put on, or they put on, a spring end-of-the-year garden potluck that mimicked the Welcome Back picnic that happens annually in the fall. So there was great attendance at the event, and all left with full bellies and with more information about the EMS outdoor classroom spaces, much thanks to student-led tours and a mid-event presentation to attendees. The EMS also has a new school orchard, which is comprised of heritage apple trees, peach, and plum trees, thanks to Richard Hodges of Retrius. The trees will begin fruiting in four years, just in time for many of the second and third graders who helped plant the trees to taste the fruit of their labor as eighth graders. About 240 students participated that day in planting the school orchard. Thank you to all of the volunteers who helped make this possible. This year, also, a deer fence was installed around the garden. A huge thank you to Krista Little Sebold, who spearheaded this project, and the endless generosity and support of the Ellsworth Garden Club. And of course, to Mr. Jim Newitt for being such a rock star and supporter and advocate, and Mrs. Peterson-Roper as well.
Yeah, we rock.
Yeah. So we had monthly taste tests as well in the cafeteria at EMS, and two new items have been introduced and retained as a result. The broccoli salad and kale salad have been a huge hit and embraced by students and staff alike. Happy eating. First, second, third, fourth, fifth grade gardening and cooking club, and the gifted and talented students, as well as one sixth-grade class of all, utilize the garden spaces for curriculum connections with and without Food Corps support. There's five new indoor grow light stations that are, that have found a new home in five of the classrooms at EMS, and those were donated by Healthy Acadia and the support of Ellsworth Garden Club. A school food survey was conducted this year as well. With over 600 responses, it will serve as a starting point to set goals that will help the nutrition department meet the desires of the community within their means and create a level of transparency that honors the hard work of the food service staff and the contributions of volunteer input and support. Looking forward to next year, the last year of Food Corps service in the Ellsworth School District, the dedicated members currently actually are seeking a $2,000 grant from the main school garden network in order to fund a school garden coach position, and the submission deadline is August 1st. Food Corps hopes to connect with the health teacher in the coming academic year. Food Corps, with the support of Ray Daly and the food service staff, hopes to implement Farm Fresh Fridays once a month in the cafeteria, where the menu for the day will feature at least 50% of local food on the trays. In the coming year, Food Corps service will act less as an independent teacher and more as a coach and resource for teachers in order to support the sustainability of garden-based curriculum integration into their teaching portfolios and planning. At Ellsworth High School, we also had a great year. Six taste tests in all were conducted in the EHS cafeteria. The kale salad will be reintroduced again next year, into the salad bar next year. And a passionate group of ninth-grade students have participated consistently in the EHS Sustainable Arts and Garden Club on a weekly basis this past year, beginning in March. These students are also participating in a summer gardening club, and our tomatoes are almost ready. They're nice and big. Approximately 10 to 15 pounds of greens grown in the greenhouse were served on the salad bar this year on numerous occasions in April through June. And we also use some of those spring greens grown by the high school students to conduct a taste test down at EMS, which was well-received by the elementary school students and middle school students. Just a plug, a huge thank you to the Ellsworth buildings, or to Ellsworth Building Supplies for contributing gift card funds to all three of the school garden programs this year. Also, students from the garden club were able to raise $300 for their garden club by selling seedlings at the Ellsworth Garden Club annual plant sale. So looking forward, we want to, or the school would like to increase student involvement via garden club and also classroom participation in the outdoor classroom. We want to increase garden cafeteria connections, so grow more produce to be tasted on the salad bar and beyond. Continue to build the garden team at EHS, which is currently comprised of three teachers, and meet on a regular basis. Lastly, Hancock County Technical Center. The culinary program, construction program, and media program at HCTC were all involved with the garden installation that took place on March 26, 2016. The garden is about five raised beds, four by eight, with a couple of trellises, and they've already been enjoying strawberries and sugar snap peas, as well as a variety of herbs. So, let's see. So on a monthly basis, Food Corps led garden-based cooking lessons that introduced 11th-grade culinary students to whole foods, new recipes, and how those foods could be grown in their new garden. Food Corps also led a few lessons with the Early Childhood Education Program, nursing, and the nursing program throughout the year. Looking forward, Food Corps will assist in creating sustainable connections between several of the programs at HCTC, especially the culinary program. So with the new garden that offers hands-on skill-building and learning opportunities to the students there. And then Food Corps will engage the Early Childhood Education Program further in the garden setting. And lastly, I would just like to say how grateful I am and how blessed I feel for this year of experiences with your district. You truly have a very special community here in Ellsworth. Thank you for letting me be a part of it and embracing me with open arms. And I'll always keep you in my heart, and I'll sure be back to visit and eat some of those fruits off those trees. Be well and eat well. And then there's some pictures attached if you all want to take a look. Some students eating rainbow salads, kale salads, planting the trees. We have our awesome food service staff at EMS posing in front of one of these posters that a third-grade class put together on School Lunch Hero Day, which was exciting and I hope will continue. We have some sugar snap peas that were very generous this year at all of the gardens. And then a picture of the dedicated EHS students with all of the produce that they've grown, or some of the produce that they've grown, that was served on the salad bar. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ally. I'd like to say, I think that the fourth pillar of the Food Corps, which is the staying power, I think your legacy will definitely produce a lot of staying power here. And we're going to be very sorry to see you go, but we know that we'll have a part of you with us for many years to come. So thank you so much.
Back to item, item four.
Item four.
Okay. First read of amended policy, JJIA, high school co-curricular programs.
I make a motion to accept the first read of policy, JJIA, high school co-curricular programs, as amended and recommended by the policy committee.
I second that.
All those in favor? First read of amendment, amended policy, JJIB, grades five through eight co-curricular activities.
I make a motion to accept the first read of policy, JJIB, grades five through eight co-curricular activities, as amended and recommended by the policy committee.
I second that.
Discussion?
If I may just add one thing. One of the things that was talked about, and I was speaking with Mr. Newitt about it a little bit earlier, one of the proposed changes, that if it is approved at the second read, would be a minor change in physical examinations that need to be put in place for students who participate in extracurricular athletics. Previously, it had been one physical exam through the entire year at EMS. Policy is now going to provide for having physical exams for students who participate every two years. So for example, a student who starts in grade five will have them in grade five, seven, nine, 11. A student starts in grade six would proceed the same way. So it would represent a change for students at EMS. The high school, it's always been every two years. It has not been that way at EMS. But that is in the first read of the policy.
And further discussion? All those in favor? First read of policy, IKF, graduation requirements.
I make a motion to accept the first read of policy, IKF, graduation requirements as recommended by the policy committee.
I second that.
No, again, I just want to point out in this policy, there are some areas that are still being discussed at the leadership committee level, and that will be brought back to the policy committee, and we'll make sure that the rest of the board is updating. We can have some discussion about that.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Item seven, discussion and consideration of school bus lease purchase.
And you should have in your packet a copy of the low-bid document. And what I did bring is other copies, and can just provide the board with. There were four bids put out for the lease purchase for the school bus that was approved in the FY 1617 budget. You have the low bid, which is for a total of $93,705.25 over five years. The second bid was $93,730. It was pretty competitive. The third and fourth bids were higher by about $1,500 and $2,000. So we're recommending to you that you approve and accept the low bidder, Gorham Leasing Group, with a bid of $93,705.25.
I move that we approve the school bus lease purchase as presented and recommended by the Facilities and Transportation Committee.
Second that. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Calendars and announcements. Meeting schedule. Policy committee meeting Monday, August 1st, 2016, Ellsworth School Department offices at 8:00 a.m. School board meeting Tuesday, August 9th, 2016, City Council chamber, 6:30 p.m. School board workshop Tuesday, August 23rd, 2016,